We're gonna start here in a couple of minutes and I'll go ahead and make one more announcement. I noticed there's a few more people that kind of here that wasn't here before. But if you don't wanna have to stand, uh, there is some more seats out in the lobby in front. And there's a, the video will be playing in there. And then if you've signed up for public comment, we'll call your name, so what it is, but just wanna make you aware of it.
This is what everybody's seeing. This is what everybody's seeing. They're seeing me live in a book.
Also, before we started, we do have two public hearings tonight. So if you come here to speak either on the closure of Route 640, Camp Dickinson Lane, uh, make sure you get signed up on the right sheet. Also, if you're here and you wanna speak on the budget, the proposed budget for this coming fiscal year, there's a sheet for it, and also there's a sheet for public comment. Okay, this time I have six P M. And I'll go ahead and call for order. The regular monthly meeting of the Grayson County Board Supervisors for this Thursday, June the eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for your attendance here tonight. Have just arrived, uh, there is three different sign-up sheets out in the lobby. If you would like to speak, uh, there's one sign-up sheet for the public hearing concerning, uh, the closure of State Route 640, Camp Dickinson Road, uh, lane or lane, which is two hundred and thirty-nine feet. And then, uh, there's also a sign-up sheet for a public hearing, for the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, budget. And also for a sign-up sheet for a public comment. Uh, at this point, I'd ask, uh, Mr. Smith, if you would leave us on the invitation when we're in place of reasons.
I'll thank you for this being tonight. Here's about that's going on in the county. Thank you for our board of supervisors, our board of workforce. Each one of them, who should be with them if they make decisions, and I would appreciate your name and questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me see. I would like to, since we do have several people here tonight, and there will be, uh, appears to be several people signed up to speak. Uh, remind you of the decorum, which is located on the back of the agenda sheet. It just says that all meetings conducted with the, this chamber are to be observed, controlled. Um, behavior, uh, during all official meetings shall be consistent with the behavior exercised in any court or legislative room found within the Commonwealth of Virginia. Just ask that, uh, as each one speaks, with a little bit of respect for the Speaker of the Parliament, and the public commentary, in three minutes, uh, time limit, in order to have it on for everybody to have opportunity to speak. And again, I do appreciate having everyone out. It's a good turnout. Uh, next on the agenda would be the approval of the, uh, agenda and the consent agenda. Uh, all the members have received the packet ahead of time. If you have time to review that, Chair entertain a motion to adopt the, uh, agenda consent agenda.
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair also aye. Our first item on the agenda will be, uh, a request that's been submitted to, for a public hearing to receive public comment, consider the following request of a section of Route 640, Camp Dickinson Lane, two hundred and thirty-nine point eighteen feet, a distance of zero point zero four five three miles. Be abandoned from the VDOT secondary road system. It's time of, uh, Chair to entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Say.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair also aye. Mr. Smith will bring us the roster for the.
That one's on there.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, our, um, first person we have signed up to speak in the, uh, first place, Mr. Anthony Gomez. Gomez, I'm sorry. Just like our, uh, just state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Anthony Gomez. I'm the director of Camp Dickinson. My address is one of my four Camp Dickinson Lane, uh, in S40, two four. Uh, so the petition that, uh, we're discussing this evening, uh, I brought to the county, uh, in effect, and I know there have been some photos taken, and I hope it will be available to the board of supervisors here this evening. But in effect, we are asking, uh, for a moving of the interstate maintenance so that we can adjust where we have some gates on our property, uh, with the intent of limiting public access to our site and facility. Uh, the primary reason for this is that we operate, uh, in three main modes of operation at Camp Dickinson. We are a, uh, summer camp, a residential summer camp for children and youth, in which we will have up to a hundred children, ages eight to seventeen, staying on-site overnight at a time. We also operate as a, as a retreat facility, uh, so guests will come and they will stay overnight, uh, often for weekends, but sometimes for, for longer on our property. And we also operate in our new campground where we have twenty-nine sites that folks will come and, and camp for the weekend. Twenty-two of those sites, uh, folks will actually lease by the year. So they will lease the right to, to camp on our sites and they will have a section of the property in which they can leave their camper in their property, uh, where they do not have to be staying. So we are seeking to move this gate, uh, to reduce public access where, um, we are the only property owner for over a mile on either side of the road. Um, and there has been, uh, prior to the property being Camp Dickinson, a public ferry that was operated by the Dickinson family, prior to it being donated to United Methodist Church for the purpose of becoming a camp. At that time, uh, the public was able to access the river there, uh, so that they could access the ferry, to move across the road, sell its vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. That is no longer in operation, uh, so we would, uh, like to be able to move a gate because we have two gates, one of which is mostly a visual, um, indicator at this point because any vehicle, uh, with only two-wheel drive and neutral road clearance can drive around the current gate to access sixteen of our eighteen buildings and any individuals that are on-site, even if one of our gates is closed. Uh, so we would like to be able to restrict access, uh, to folks to, uh, the five hundred and thirty-six acres that we are, we're managing there while we have guests, uh, which is in effect all the time. There was a period where Camp Dickinson only operated during the summer, but we are now at a point where we do have year-round operation. And so we'd like to be able to secure our property and our guests and the property of our guests that they leave their sites.
Next, thank you. Yeah, next registered speaker is, uh, Bobby Dixon.
Yeah, Count Dixon. I grew up there. It's got a lot of history. Probably one of the first buries, I guess, that was ever in Grayson County. And he goes back a long time. Personally, myself, I would hate to see it close. That was my playground as a boy. I really enjoyed it, and I would hate to see it close. About all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Fifty-four Beaver. Come on up if you think you wanna speak.
Just state your name and address.
Uh, I'm gonna speak for some thirty-seven signatureers against closing the road at Camp Dickinson.
Okay, if you would just state your name and address for someone.
Uh, L E W D O, uh, fifty-four, Burningwood Way, Galaxia, Virginia. I'm on the other side of the river, but anyhow, they wanted me to come in a little bit, so. I mean, I enjoy, like Potty said, I enjoy going down there, especially in the fall of the year to see the deer, and it's just beautiful down there. And I don't think that the Dickersons would give the land to Camp Dickinson for them to want to close excess, you know? So I am against it one hundred percent. And I just hope that y'all will be, uh, satisfied. This thing's done been through here one time, and we gave by no record, so in the courthouse, it's nowhere. But it's, this, this is the second floor round for this, uh, you know, to try to close the road. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, John. You might, uh, serve Mr. Dillon? Chair that was. Uh, appears that we do not have any other registered speakers, um, before we close, uh, before we close. I wonder who's staff. Take a bite.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of those that are concerned about the Camp Dickinson road closure. So after hearing, uh, kind of what has been said here tonight, uh, kind of surprising, but, um, based on what we've heard and during the comment time and the opposition that's at hand, in addition to those that have signed a petition, um, not to close the, the road, um, I staff recommend to the board, um, to no longer support the abandonment request of the half-mile and for that particular section of the road to remain in VDOT's end before it. I say that because historically, as we know, um, in the past, opposition that has been presented to VDOT through the Land Use Department, to C T B, will not close the road anyway. So that is my recommendation to the board. Do you have any questions for me?
So Camp Dixon's bringing up a security issue.
Sure.
Are there any alternatives to help? Are there any ways to address their issue while at the same time acknowledging the fact that this will be difficult to close that road? I know you're not a security person, but.
I'm not. Um, it might be something that we can talk to Mr. Gomez about. I'm not sure what any.
It seems like recently there was a development, I think, down by the river, uh, on the other side of, uh, twenty-one, going smart. Yeah, and there was a request with VDOT to move the gate for that in order to address security concerns. That was all part of a similar, I think, concern that they had, security related, but also people around the corner. Maybe we could go back to VDOT and say, hey, can you work with Camp Dixon and see if we can address their security turn, uh, concerns at the same time, keeping the road open and public access? Is that a good way?
I will be glad to take that, anything I can do to help the cause.
Anything further to extend? This time, uh, Chair to entertain a motion to come out of the public comment. Have a motion for a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair also aye. That's what, somebody wants to make a motion. Make a motion, we, uh, abandon the abandonment? Follow, uh, staff recommend a motion?
Make a motion, we follow staff.
Okay, I have a second. Second. Okay. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair also aye. Thank you. Next, uh, on the agenda would be a public hearing to receive, uh, public comment on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Have a motion to go into public hearing. So move. What? Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair also aye. Okay. There's no one to sign up. Okay, so, uh, motion to come out of public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair also aye. Sorry, uh, do a, uh, so I have a motion, uh, Chair entertain a motion to adopt the budget? We're not ready to leave it, okay. Sorry. All right, next under, uh, reports, presentations, or requests, uh, new river camera, Mr. Keith Andrews. In handy with.
Thank you. Glad everybody turned on for this. Just a quick rehash. Back in twenty twenty, back in the fall of twenty twenty, uh, started having some discussions concerning the clean river aspect of, of the new river. And the fact that the New River Law Life Observation Club was the only organization at that time that was doing anything fully, uh, trying to protect the new and trying to make it cleaner, make it more enjoyable and such as that. And, uh, through discussions in the early spring, with the board and such, uh, came up with, uh, some ideas. And that came into pass as a proclamation that was put on the May thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. And I think it's always important to go back and, and see what the basis was for something so that we can keep with that and understand what commitments were made and what we're gonna be trying to do. So, uh, there are a few things in that proclamation that, uh, anytime I'm talking about it, I'm always gonna go back to the proclamation first, because that sounds, that's the groundwork. And there are a couple of comments in there that I'd like to bring to your attention. Uh, first, it was where the Board of Supervisors, Grayson County, cleaned the month of August, cleaning River Month in Grayson County. Where we're striving to protect the new in our county as we build the next generations who will protect the going forward. So it's really two parts on this. One, we want to keep it clean as our responsibility, our generation. But then also, how do we start building the next generation? Sorry to say, a lot of people that are involved with the river cleanup today have this on their face, on their hair, and, uh, it's one group that, that we worked with somewhat, which is Preserve Grayson in the first year when they brought everybody out that they were gonna put in the river and such. I said, oh, my gosh, all of you are escapees from the geriatric ward. And I can say that because I'm part of the geriatric ward. But the rest of you can't try that. Anyway, so we wanna look at this thing as far as what are we doing today? And what are we doing going forward and such as that, because we do have to build that. And there were some commitments made as far as providing us how we would do that. First, we want to work with other organizations to include and provide developmental opportunities as well as doing more of the actual activities of keeping the river clean. Uh, develop an overall communication plan, and I think you've seen it over the past few years, one of the articles and such about clean river efforts. Notice I'm talking about not cleanups. I'm also talking about other activities that involve keeping the river clean. We also have a plank in there that talks about encouraging property owners to have river funders to do their part. And I can tell you, as a property owner and river fund, it's a constant job because everything does flow downstream, so, uh, I have some things already for this year's cleanup. Um, but to do that, and then provide promotional and logistics for organizations and groups that sponsor in-river type of float trips to keep it clean, and then provide materials for individuals, kayakers, tubers, canoes and such, to also. So how many people and how many ways can we get people involved? I'm glad to say that that first year, uh, we got started in May and actually had five or six cleanups that year in twenty twenty-one, and took that two hundred and thirty-one tires out of the river. We had two other type of informational programs. And, uh, in some of the stewardship, we had some available land that's where we provided a family with some of the, I'll let you sing now, the onion bags, the red onion bags, become kind of popular. Uh, for this one family, songs, offered them a couple of bags, came back to the following Monday, had a call saying the kids had a blast. It was like scavenger hunt. They called them two bags, but that's starting to build stewardship. Now, with everything we did, one of the things at the beginning was to say, if you put all your ba, eggs in one basket, you can get disappointed in August. Sooner or later, one of the weekends, it'll rain that. So that's the reason we tried to do the whole month. And provide opportunities to educate and such as that. Last year, it wasn't as good, let's just put it that way. Um, last year, we had had involvement of seven groups or agencies to help with the whole clean river effort. Uh, we did two informational programs, including Fish of the New, which is a fish shocking, uh, to see what fish are out there, and talk about water quality impact on that. Uh, we had five planned river cleanups, but only one took place due to river conditions or weather. But that group did get twenty-four tires for that group. We were introduced to a particular individual that I've gotten to know quite well, that this individual during the month of August, multiple days, took fifty-one tires on his own out of the river. And that's quite an achievement. Um, we did introduce new concepts last year. We worked with Department of Wildlife Resources to, to put two bag stands at two locations at D W R sites that had clean river bags on there. And during that month of August, and I might say that D W R was very receptive to that idea. And we provided them with a plan as far as what it would look like and as well as how we would staff it and maintain it and such as that, very acceptable to them. But in that one month, through those two sites, we distributed a hundred and twenty bags. And we even see them when we went to pick them up later on, after we worked that. We had four commercial bag distribution locations, being libraries or salespeople for that. And based upon what Mike had said the previous year that we didn't do, we started awarding what was called stewardship certificates to individuals and had twenty-four of those that paid last year to individuals, so Mike, thanks for that, yeah. Which brings us to twenty twenty-three. And there is interest, a lot of interest in clean river effort. And I can just go by, uh, our membership that, that we've had, we had a kind of a campaign for twenty-three and twenty-three, and we've already achieved that. And many of those people got on board because of what they saw about river cleanup and what we were trying to do, not just us, but again, their, their. Not just us, but again, there are four other organizations that are kind of the bandstand that are already there. So, New River Conservancy, Gracian Land Care, Reserve Grayson, DWR, so, it's a lot of good groups that have still backed us and advocated. So, so we have the potential for ten groups and agencies to support it, so we're getting more involved with that. We have three information programs, and we had one this past weekend, didn't do as well as we'd like, maybe it was past week's weather. Fish of the New concept was there again, but we also tried to have something called Fish of the New and Clean it too, where if you took one of the trash bags and got some trash, then you could enter the fishing contest. So, that was the interesting thing. And we're going to probably continue to promote that in August. Also this year, New River Conservancy will be conducting one of their Water Watchers workshops, and with that workshop, which was funded by a donation to New River Conservancy, we'll be able to establish five river monitoring stations in the county, which is again part of the clean river aspect. We do have five planned in river cleanups with potential adding two more. We have four bag distribution places already, and one more potential. We're receiving requests from river kayaking groups to give them bags, so that they can keep, and I'm staying with these bags, it's not a one-time use, because a lot of times people use them multiple times during the summer when they're on the river. And that again contributes to us continuing that way. So, we have that. But as far as areas needing improvement, I don't know how many of you see the articles or whatever, so I'm all constantly going to be saying we need to have a better formal communication plan, getting the information out. And that's, that's not putting down anybody, any department, anything, I'm part of that as well. But we got to get the message out. The individual owner thing, that's one group that we really haven't been able to give the information out to per se. And I don't know if there's some way that we can find the various pool owner associations that have membership on the river, that if you could have five or six contact points, they could then spread the information out, that would help. And I don't know if we can ever get where we can include the messages about clean river and something like the mail in spring that deals with personal property and have availability or, but that's would be one aspect as well. Going forward, with the amount of people that are coming in and showing interest, if you've got an old dirty John vote that you don't use during the month of August, we can use. So, you have that. And New River Wildlife Conservation Club does support the other groups with such things as the John Votes, also with such things as personal flotation devices, which we require people to have, if you're in the order, you're going to wear it as we do this, and that type of thing. I'd also say, maybe need to start looking for a new poster child, I'm being described as that, because any more youth on people gets them up here. So, it is something that is showing progress. I think when we first discussed this, one of the former board members, that we make these resolutions, and yet we never see anything come out of it. Well, I, I'm glad to say that we're entering year three of making it work. And we would appreciate your continued support, and that goes for everybody. And the base and such of the various river cleanups and activities that's coming out, get involved. We need your help. And it's also helping for you and your family and your kids and your company. So, thank you, Watcher.
Thank you, Keith. My good day. Next, under new business would be a resolution about any number of safety concerns. Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution for asking for a review study in contact with VDOT. And this is a recommended draft in something, reflectors from eighty-nine is paid, the reflect reflectors in the center line may have been put back. If anybody lives in Fairview, knows how Paul gets out there, I don't know why they didn't name it Paulview instead of Fairview. It really gets Paulsy. Supervisor felt asked us to work with VDOT on this, that's what this resolution is. And we had to read it once. First, agree. Okay, the resolution, safety concerns during inclement weather on Route eighty-nine in the Fairview community of Grayson County, whereas the Grayson County Board of Supervisors requesting a review study of Route eighty-nine in the Fairview community of Grayson County for a safety concern. And whereas the reflectors are not being replaced in the center line due to the history of damage and cost. And whereas due to the safety concerns related to following limit the site distance in inclement weather, now therefore the Grayson County City Board of Supervisors hereby request a review study of this area for public roadways safety, adopted by the Grayson County Board of Supervisors on the eighth day of June twenty twenty-three. Okay, it's required to go call, uh, fans striving, uh, chair also aye. So, this is just for Fairview eighty-nine, they're, they're not the only place Grayson County gets followed. Do we have to do this for every road that we want to get reflectors on, or is this just trying to get them to replace the ones that used to be there?
This is a replacement. When the road was paved, newly paved, the reflectors did not get put back in. And VDOT has determined that due to the costs and the damage it caused coming up our road and getting cars and things that we're going to want to.
But in this case, we want to, but.
We're asking for them to do a review study of what could be done. There's other, there's other things that they can look at, and so we're asking them to do that review studies, what can be replaced.
It gives, it brings up the bigger question, is that not a review that needs to be done from fifty-eight going away, or any other roads? This is only coming up because it's new to them.
Only in the, so call supervisor, they'll have requests from people that live in that area, they were used to them, used to how they're gone, and so it's replacement.
I hope you just also distract that there was no intention of replacing, no intention in replacing. Not one, not going to use a replacement. Only you're going to do it on something that's why you're supposed to. Okay, I got it. Next, under board's stance.
Okay. The, we have a direct advisory committee for your term, Almarth Rep. John Alexander, who's on from May. You appoint you as still in the manner of his term, which expires twelve thirty-one twenty-three. And Chris Morton, always to serve, you appoint his term to eight, seven one twenty-three, expire off six thirty-six.
Do we have any recommendations?
Chair, make a motion to appoint Hector Young to the CCWA.
On the, on the record advisory, I got a person I'm talking to, but I don't have to get me in, but I'm sure that I'm, I'm sure.
What do you need to submit, application? How's that work?
All favors, if you can find by saying aye. You opposed? Chair also aye. Can administrative report?
Okay, a couple of HRM resource issues announcements. Everybody knows Lisa's retiring at this month. We have selected Ms. Nikki Edwards, who's sitting here with us today, to replace her. Nikki has a long history in local government and private sector, CPA, and she starts universally, we have a thirty-day window where there's some crossover, and just welcome her to our staff. We have a little ceremony, Lisa doesn't want us to have too much, we'll have a little ceremony for Lisa as she's retiring and moving on to enjoy her life after civil service. We have hired also, we've also hired two people to fill our current IT vacancies. The first is Fernando, Fernando Palms, who's here. He graduated Grayson County High School, fine young man, and he, he has two associate degrees from WCC. Second is Christian, Christian Bernard, went to Carroll County, Carroll County High School, graduated from Radford, what they BS in geospatial science and technology. These are just backfills for positions that we had lost. It's good to have some young people to, to, to thank for that. My 4H agent, Demi Sexton, had a child, she decided not to come back, so we are looking for a replacement for Sexton, if anybody's interested in that. General Registrar Director of Elections position is currently open for anyone that has interest in applying. It's open until six fifteen, the date, six fifteen at sixteen hundred hours. Stacy has accepted a position open in Carroll County, so she'll be moving at the end of this month. Large Island Company Business, Large Island Pickup, finished this week. We've got a ton of good feedback on Large Island Pickup. It's a really great service for residents, it's a ton of work for our public service, our work employees, so just thanks to them for outstanding effort on this. Mission out of cooking steaks and baked potatoes and salad for them at the end of this month. Mission with the cooking, I'll consider. We have Freeze, CPR Day is June sixth. Who wants to see the flyer, we have a flyer out for that. There's two locations, ten AM Freeze by Rescue, one PM Freeze Town Park. CPR, we all know how important CPR is, and if you can get CPR, unless you're me, I've tried CPR four times, it's never worked. Unfortunately, it's, general people are really late, late stage by the time you get there, they work. But it is, it makes you feel better knowing that you actually know what to do, so I would encourage everyone, learn CPR, and to get Freeze, this, this June tenth.
Is that all the deliberator too, or just all the traditional CPR?
Well, that's a good question, sir. I don't know if he's going to have the deep fills out or not, I'll ask him that.
It's kind of a unique program where the cops might have a different way to distribute.
We had Mr. Anderson ask me yesterday, the other day, how many deep fills, how many more deep fills have we bought for the last year? I think it was six, is that correct? I think it was what you told me, that's four, or four direct bar, two more, I don't know what features that can. What's that? Right, gate center, that's right, it is. I think the problem is if we can get them in every, it's any review, that's all, maybe some. We are actively planning for the Ag Fair, which is August eleventh to twelfth, there's a ton of work going on for that. A ton, a lot of planning goes in, so if you can volunteer, please volunteer, or if you plan on ten, that'd be great. Just talked about Clean River Month is coming up in August. I think they pulled around two hundred tires out of the river last year, so we should all be trying to help out with that at the beginning. Dale Hard Turn Lane Project has been approved, you're all aware of that, it has been approved. The last thing I'll mention from coming out is, we received notice from VDOTs that aerial treatments are scheduled on six twelve to treat spongy law. The treatments are highly subject to weather delays, but if you see them in the western end of the county, that's what they're going to be doing. We have a letter from VDOT, if anyone wants to look at the letter, review, the type of material that they're going to be spraying, I read it over. It's only one end of the western county towards Mount Rogers, and it's over in Smith County, and it talks a little bit about the Splat GMO is an organic bioregulable formulation for control of gypsy moth, using mating disruptions, it's made entirely of food grain materials and has the consistency of human brain. Safe, effective method of control of gypsy moth without impacting of any sex males or surrounding environment. If you all want to take a look at that, I've got it here. Any questions about that? I had a visit from Hubert Barrier this week.
Might remember that is.
So, Mr. Barrier certainly has a long issue with the park. He wanted to talk about the park, he wanted to talk about the test courts that were renovating there. And he let me with some articles I thought were super interesting, I want to just look it up to you real quick. In a second. Picture of Tommy Anderson, think about it, it was Tommy in front of this, I grew up with Tommy Anderson, his family. A crowd estimated four hundred persons gathered at the new Grayson Rec Park last Sunday afternoon. It's going to be John Dalton headed along with this speakers to dedicate the new five hundred and fifty thousand dollar park. Grayson Rec Commission Chairman Charles Smith Castle said the park is a reality today, mainly because of the effort of this committee members and former Independence Mayor Hubert Barrier, and community business and industrial leaders. The park was dedicated to Barry, he was presented by the commission, commission finance chairman Tommy Anderson. Castle introduced the members of his committee and thanked them publicly for the dedicated effort and support of the project. Castle introduced Eddie Goodson, who will serve as the director of the park. Hope that was funny. Castle said we are only dedicating a swimming pool here today, and there are many more projects planned for the future phase two. Castle pointed out that the grounds will be prepared for phase two, but said it will take continued financial support from community and people for the rest of the year. Barry explained that six years ago, this is a September third night committee, so six years ago, we had a dream to construct a park that the people of Grayson County and the residents can be proud of. We kept planning, grinding and dreaming until you see we'll be happy today. Even I thought the vision of these men and women, how long it took, the challenges they probably faced, like I know we're talking to Mr. Castle about the opposition towards the park, and then I look at the day and see what we had, that park certainly had a huge influence on my life. We all spent our summers there swimming, played baseball there, I coached, I spent a lot of time there, and it really impacted the men, some men in this county had been impacted on the media, which was Eddie Goodson, the strong, men like that who kind of raised me was just a big deal. So, I want to talk a little bit about the park and some of the things that are going on, because we had a lot of questions about it. We still continue, I think we're going to continue with the vision of what these men and women had, and our vision will be to inspire this community, to be a leader in the regional area of parking rec. We want our folks to have, to live a healthy lifestyle, to provide sustainable and dynamic parking rec system to support the people of Grayson County and its visitors. And as the stewards of this park, Keith, Dylan and staff, we're going to do a few things. We're going to develop partnerships, provide quality and valuable programs, communicate effectively, and we will value the workforce there and demonstrate fiscal responsibility. Couple of things I want to talk to you about, the new programs that are taking place. We have nine summer camps, basketball camp, kayak camp, three separate camps, outdoor adventure camp, safety camp, athletic camp. We have summer tennis league, seventh and eighth grade basketball, thirteen and fifteen year old baseball and softball, men's and women's slow pitch softball. We partner with New River Country Code, for any Grayson resident now can play golf for member prices on Tuesdays. We partner with Grayson County Cross Country for Freedom Five K on the fourth of July. We're swimming lessons now, I taught swimming lessons there when I was a kid, and most people want to teach our adults, and we're starting that again. We have open gyms for Grayson Highlands Elementary, Grayson County High School, indoor pickleball at Independence Elementary, Halloween event, over a thousand people at park, and you had a daddy doll dance first time ever. Facilities, tennis, basketball, pickleball court remodel, if you haven't seen that court, there's basketball goals up, it's a pickleball now, it's also a tennis, it's going to be fantastic, we did it for nothing. All buildings have been painted, the office shed, nine picnic shelters, press box that have all been painted, it's great, the press box, interior construction is completed. The office has been remodeled, there's new drills, there's picnic shelters, bleachers, there's some safety features at the bleachers, some of our older folks were having a hard time coming up and down the bleachers, so we had a brand. Some of our older folks were having a hard time coming up and down the bleachers, so we had a grand castle, put some steps up there, a railing around, so it's more safe. The pool filters room, room is renovated, and we built a twenty six hundred dollar indoor facility for around five bucks a square foot. That is all done with a budget of about one point seven percent of the county's budget. In the pool, I kind of ran some short data, we're gonna host over ten thousand people this year, ten thousand people. That says something about the county. All this work happens not because of myself or Mitch or us, it's happens because of Keith, Dylan and the folks that are up there working hard. Now that I'm coaching baseball, I see these guys leaving every night at nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock at night. When I'm coaching on the weekends, I see them on Saturdays and Sundays up there, scraping fields, working, making sure the pools are ready. They're up there all the time, it's because they love accounting, they love working, so we should be thankful for it again, that's all I got.
If you are here with a group and it is something, you want to designate a speaker, that speaker instead of three minutes, it's five minutes. So, that might be a consideration.
At this time, I'll call our meeting back to a new order. I have registered speaker, first one would be Mr. Kevin Spurlin. Resolution response regarding pesticide application in Grayson County. Good evening, my name's Kevin Spurlin, I'm the senior extension agent, serving Grayson County. Been doing that for almost seventeen years now. I've got family in virtually every part of the county. Brother with the drought field, summer field, parts of Freeze. Saturated baywood, pretty good. I'm very concerned about the people of this community, that's why I do, probably I do, I care very much about every citizen, every landowner, and I try to serve them to the best of my ability. I also fully support the public's right to ask questions, particularly of sensitive matters. Pesticide use is one such sensitive matter. Probably for, for decades anyway. Pesticide use has been scrutinized and largely misunderstood in some ways. And so this resolution came forward in January the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. I've worked with staff, because of my mandate with Virginia Corporate Extension and Virginia Tech, I have a role to educate citizens as well as farmers about safe and effective pesticide use. And so over those seventeen years I've been serving the county, I have fielded many, many questions about pesticide use. And I, and I certainly support the right of people to ask questions if they don't understand what's going on. I will also say that anything that is out of the way, we do not support misuse. And so I'm gonna get into the regulations, I think this is something that I've shared with the board, in your board packet. I want to highlight a few items here, as it pertains to the regulation. First and foremost, a lot of folks may not understand that pesticide use is highly regulated. It's regulated federally by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. There's not a product that can be sold, that can be used, unless it's been vetted by the EPA. In Virginia, regulations of pesticide use are held by the Virginia Board of Agriculture and Consumer Services. And that, that authority is granted legislatively via the Virginia Pesticide Control Act, which is, you can find that in the Code of Virginia. Enforcement of provisions of the Virginia Pesticide Control Act is delegated to the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Office of Pesticide Services. And so such officials within VDAX enforce certain things such as worker protection standard. And I brought some things here, just to show you all, this is very educational, I hope. Here's, here's the worker protection, federal worker protection standard, man. All farmers that have farm workers that may potentially be exposed must comply with. If a farmer is applying anything that they cannot buy over the counter, they must get a license, they must receive continuing education every two years. To get that license, they have to take a test on this map. They have to keep records of pesticide uses, of anything restricted use, basically anything that they would have to have a license to purchase. And my role with extension, part of our, our job is to prep individuals for these tests, as well as conduct their recertification education programs. Virginia is a label state, what does that mean? It means that any pesticide use is in violation, or any, excuse me, any pesticide use that is in violation of that product's label is a violation of the Virginia Pesticide Control Act as well as federal law. That could be anything from not finding the correct personal protective equipment to spraying the wrong amount. It also includes any application that goes off site, off target, which would include drift to another adjoining property. These are, these are unacceptable, and if these things were happening, we'd have an enforcement process in place. Our local VDAX enforcement person is located with the VDAX office. And I often encourage folks to contact that, that office if they have concerns. I just want to clarify one thing, in the Code of Virginia, give you two definitions. First definition is a pest, I'm gonna read this for the sake of it going in the public record. Public, or the pest, means any deuterious organism, that is any vertebrate animal other than man, any invertebrate animal excluding any internal parasite of living man or other living animals, so basically anything inside of us that would cause disease. A pest is also any plant growing or not wanted, and any plant part, such as a root, or any bacterium, virus, or other microorganisms, except for those on or in living man or other living animals, and those on or in processed food or processed animal feed. These are regulated by the Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act, regulated by FDA. Any organism classified as endangered threat or otherwise protected under federal state laws shall not be deemed a part deemed a pest for the purposes of this chapter. That leads us to what a pesticide is, it's any substance, and this is straight from the Code of Virginia. Any substance or mixture substances intended for preventing, destroying, repelling, or mitigating any insects, rodents, fungi, bacteria, weeds, other forms of plant or animal life, bacterium, viruses, except for viruses on or in living man or other animals, which the commissioner shall declare to be a pest. Any substance or mixture of substances intended for use as a plant regulator, defoliant, or desiccant, and any substance intended to become an active ingredient, and any substance defined in the previous clauses. So what is a pesticide? I'm gonna put a couple out here. If you look on antibacterial spray, it's got an EPA registration number, active ingredient list, directions for use, everything that you would find on any pesticide label, whether it's a citronella candle, or Clorox wipes. They're all pesticides. Sanitizers that are used to sanitize your dishes at the local restaurant or the tables have EPA registration number and are a pesticide. I think it's important that we understand that. So my next, hopefully brief comments are gonna be in the analysis of the resolution. Certainly, concerned citizens have met back in October twenty twenty-one, as well as more recently with our advisory committee and also other authorities. And we've shared this information with them. So I'm gonna go through this, there's many agencies that monitor soil and water quality, and they are, a lot of these are state and federal agencies. These include Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, Virginia Department of Health, VDAX I've already mentioned, Virginia Department of Forestry, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, Extension, USDA, New River Soil and Water Conservation District, our Grayson County Building Officials Office, planning and zoning with the erosion and sediment control, that deals with soil and water quality. And these do conservation and outreach as well as monitoring. And then we also have agencies and nonprofits, and I won't list all of those, but all these folks are working collaboratively to make sure that we protect Grayson County. And a lot of those agencies were represented when we had our first meeting with our citizen group on October the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. The second component of the resolution said we need more water quality analysis. Virginia Corporate Extension, we offer a household water testing program through Virginia Tech. This year, we've had fifty private water systems that are being evaluated, actually next Thursday, they'll be getting the results back. We do not test for pesticides, we do not have that capability. But what we can provide is a list, and I've got a list here. Virginia Department of General Services keeps a list of labs that can test for pesticides. And glad to share that with anybody that would like to, to do the test. And one thing that's important to know, because I get a lot of questions about water quality, is you know, really trying to help citizens understand what's a test. A lot of these products, they may not last in the environment very long. They may be oil-based, they don't mix with water. They may attach very highly to soil particles. They're not a leach, a leach concern. So you're not going to find these in groundwater, especially if you have highly maintained wells. We can help landowners and residents know what to test for if they really want some peace of mind. We're glad to do that. Another thing that has come up several times in discussions is, you know, all this stuff's going to kill us. You know, it's cancer, it's causing cancer. And so the Virginia Department of Health sent to the board, and hopefully this has been made public. If not, it is now. This document from the Mount Rogers Health District that basically unequivocally states that Grayson County is way, well below the Virginia average as far as cancer rates. And what's extremely interesting in this data goes from 2010 through 2019. It's, wouldn't think it works out this way, but it's actually five years, in five years. So 2010 through 2014, cancer rates in Grayson County were listed at three hundred and ninety-eight per one hundred thousand. So we have to adjust for population to compare across what counts. So three hundred and ninety-eight per one hundred thousand of population, Virginia average for those five years is four hundred and twenty-eight. So three or less. Jump ahead to the next five years from 2015 to 2019. The Grayson County rate drops to three hundred and fifty-nine per one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, while the Virginia rate is four hundred and fourteen per one hundred thousand. This data does not support the fact that cancer rates are just exploding. And in this document, and it's even bolded, there was no evidence noted for a potential cancer cluster in Grayson County. That makes me feel good. As one who's lived here, here all my life, okay? In this portion of the resolution, it asks to map out certain cancer or Parkinson's disease cases of placing, if you will, a pin or locator on each individual that has these diseases. First off, that's a violation of tip laws. Secondly, even if we had geographical information of patients with these various diseases, we could do that. What does that tell us? Any inference is based solely on the location ignores the causes or the case studies, what actually, the potential actual causes of that. And for a resolution or a policy to be enacted based solely on the location or proximity is something that, that is not causality, okay? The other resolutions, four through seven, we need better enforcement, better local regulation, barrier of application, more public notification, and protecting neighbors by requiring buffers and setbacks in addition to what, what's already there. Basically, the, the easy answer to that is Grayson County is not allowed to do that under state law. That is the sole responsibility of Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to set those laws. And they have no authority to do such. If there is a question about enforcement, and that's certainly the right to ask those questions, they need to be directed to the enforcement folks in Richmond. Last resolution point relates to lobbying for better protection for Grayson County citizens. And certainly, that's every citizen's right to share that with elected officials. Last couple of things I'll mention is this resolution, and the basis for the concerns is that we are rural in nature, we historically support the culture that we all have come to enjoy. That's absolutely true. Our comprehensive plan spells that out. Census of Agriculture data also shows that we have shifted. We have more Christmas trees now than we used to have. We have fewer dairies, fewer tobacco. Tobacco is basically extinct. But we also have the, there are additional claims that we have increased chemical use and deterioration of water quality, or losses of soil productivity, increased incidences of cancer and other diseases. And there's no, there's no data. There's, there's no unbiased support of, of those claims. So where, where are the metrics? So I'm going to kind of wrap up. There was an article in the, in the newspaper that came out and basically was quoting the May meeting. And some of the information that was shared in that meeting, in that meeting spoke to some of these concerns that I have. One of those said, and it uses a, a research article, that residents living within fifty feet of a straight-line agriculture spring have higher body mass index and exposure to organophosphates by female greenhouse workers, and it led to higher incidences of depression and fatigue. And there were other conclusions drawn from that study. I looked at that study because that's what I'd be looking for, is data, okay? And I'm going to give you the title of the paper. It's from the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health. The title is Residential Proximity to Agricultural Fields and Neurological Public Health Outcomes in Rural Adults in Matlab, Bangladesh. Then the last week, I received a call from a local real estate agent. Had a client looking at property, they're not from here. That client interested in the property. They start checking social media, looking around, looking at the news, seeing what's out here. And they're hearing a lot of things that are not supported by fact. And it influences their decision on whether to become a part of our community. I just wanted to make sure tonight that we came and we talked about sharing facts. That's what I'm here to do. I'm here to serve every single person in the county. I'm not here to sell anybody on pesticides. If you're, you're right not to use them if you don't want to, okay? It's not, it's your right to be protected from them. Also want to protect the rights of farmers and forest owners and pesticide users who do that responsibly, legally, by the law, to be able to maintain those tools to support their livelihoods and their own health. I welcome any questions and concerns, citizens. Like I told that one real estate agent, I said, he said, how do I respond? I said, you don't. I have the training. Every year I go to the training. He doesn't. It's my job, it's my mandate. So I encourage anyone that wants to reach out, I hope, if you do have concerns, it just ease your concerns to some degree, and let, and I want you to know I'm here for you. If you've got any questions about the resolution, about my response to this white paper that I put together for you, I'd be glad to take those.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
I would bring this to our registered speakers and public comment. Would, again, since we do have several speakers here, remind everybody to be respectful of the three-minute time period and to not interrupt anyone who's there speaking. They have an opinion or a view that's contrary to your goal, okay? Our next, uh, first speaker is Grayson County.
Hi, I'm Tracy Cummins, M43, Carrollville Road. And so thanks for the guest. I want you to know I appreciate you to do, I appreciate the work that you do. I appreciate Kevin's investigations, I do appreciate that. So we did have our first grace and life resource in our meeting, and things are moving quickly. So I'm getting phone calls, hey, let's do this, hey, can we do this, hey, do this. So I did want you to know that we are finding a lot of support. The community is reaching out to me. They do want to help people who are facing with life issues from, from womb to tube. We want to help people all the way, all the way. So we've decided to have a meeting on Saturday, June 24th. We haven't decided exactly on the location, but maybe the Freedom Center here on Main Street, or it may be First Baptist Church, we're not a hundred percent sure yet. But June 24th is the date that the, the one-year celebration of Doc's decision that states abortion is not a constitutional right. So we do want to, to celebrate that. We will have speaker, we'll share information, and we'll have refreshments. We will also take donations for diapers or any financial donation. We're not set up to take a lot of money right now, but we do have some things that we want to purchase and get in place. So we want to get started with that. So we are going to meet at ten o'clock, actually ten, ten AM on Saturday morning, June 24th, because that is the exact time that a messenger came to tell people exactly when the news came that this river's just waiting to return. This messenger's name was John. And so I want to read another messenger, John 10:10. "The deed comes only to kill, steal, and destroy." But Jesus said, "I come to give life abundantly." It's not a coincidence, not for, not for people who believe in God, it's not a coincidence. July 4th, we're going to be set up up here at Forest to collect diapers, donate your donations, and we're going to have some T-shirts for sale too. So I encourage you to come out and visit and send bring a donation if you can. Now, personal note, I proclaim to be a messianic Jewish believer, okay? I'm serious, messianic Jewish. And I'm pro-life from conception. Now, I know Muslims here in town that believe abortion is forbidden. So I also know some Christians, claim to be Christians, who really go either way. So I do believe that this is not a religious issue. This sanctuary for the unborn, it doesn't have anything to do with religion, in my opinion, because it's all over the place, it's just all over the place. It's interesting that ninety-five percent of biologists of over one thousand fifty-eight academic institutions agree life begins at fertilization. Ninety, ninety-six percent actually. So this is not even a scientific issue. So this is a moral issue. And unfortunately, this world has made it a political issue. And I hate that it is. But since it is a political issue, let's, let's go there, let's go there. I want to sum up real quick, and I want to use some very important words in case we have forgotten them. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed from their Creator with, with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." That's me. And that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter it or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." Now, in case you say that's not a good argument, okay, okay, I hear that. I'll just go to Constitution. "We, uh, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our best sainity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." I am for this sanctuary for the unborn, because, and I think, I thank Kevin for clarifying everything but a human is labeled a pest. They're not pests. At fertilization, according to his works, thank you, Kevin. And I want to end with this. I do base my election choices on these documents. I do. And that leads me to Deuteronomy 30:19. "I call on heaven and earth to witness against you today. I present you with life and death, a blessing if we choose life and a curse if we choose death. Therefore, choose life so that our children, and that life will again bless them."
Good evening. Jane Cott, 7122, Carrollville Road, Mount Royal Street. I have come here to my request and that you move forward with the public hearing to present an ordinance to make Grayson County a sanctuary for the unborn. By delaying this to December, I feel you will be doing in the charging of the citizens of this county a grave injustice. God has greatly blessed our county, and for him to continue to do so, we must follow his commandments. We must rely on God's truth, realizing that the scriptures speak louder than the train in our culture. We must stand firm in God's truth, never wavering, regardless of the threats of our enemies. We must never back down from our biblical worldview. God's word does not change, no matter what society says. Thank you.
Molly Kay Luther.
Molly Kay Luther.
Luther, okay, I'm sorry.
My name is Molly Kay Luther, 512, Parkview Road, Grayson, Virginia. So I'm nineteen-year-old lifelong resident of Grayson County. According to the US CDC, one million two hundred and fifty thousand babies were aborted in 2003, the year that I was born. Today, the demographic of women that abortions are performed on are young, quiet, college-educated women, a demographic to which I fall into. However, unlike these women, I know life. According to the National Center for Biotechnology Information, human life, without exception, begins precisely when fertilization of the egg is successful. So it is a fact that human life begins at conception. With that said, the question to you, members of the board, is do you value human life? Some will try to say that babies in the womb are not alive or even human until they hit certain phases in their development. Some will attempt to claim that the moment a child becomes viable is when they become valuable. However, people who require dialysis, life support, a ventilator, or any other kind of medical assistance are still human lives and therefore valuable. Many will draw the line at when a heartbeat can be detected. However, more than three million Americans need a pacemaker to survive. Some cardiac patients even require heart transplants. Mr. Harold Van Hooij, a member of our community, lived fourteen months with a heart that could not beat on its own. He required an electronic stimulator to survive until he received a heart transplant. Would it have been perfectly fine to murder or dismember Mr. Van Hooij during those fourteen months? Any line that a pro-choice advocate can draw as to when a life in the womb can be ended also corresponds with living people outside of the womb. And once we start saying that certain human lives are not valuable, we are on the same moral level as Adolf Hitler and Joseph Stalin. If you remember, if you, members of the board, define whether or not a life is valuable based on fear of backlash or whether or not it's politically correct, that is evil. And basing whether or not someone is a human with the right to life on if they are wanted, sounds like something straight off of page two ninety-four in Michael. Killing innocent children is not the answer to bad sexual decisions. Deuteronomy 30:19 says, "Choose life that both you and your children..." Deuteronomy 30:19 says, "Choose life that both you and your children may live." I am a Christian, but that does not mean that there are not other like-minded members of our community. There are people in Grayson County who are Muslim, agnostic, atheist, and even pagan that believe that the murder of babies inside the womb is nothing short of genocide. I can assure all of you that even though they may not be here today, their voices, as well as my own, will be heard on Election Day, and our votes will be determined by your decision on this matter. Thank you.
Harold, then on.
It's my pleasure to be here today. I didn't come with any notes to, do you have any intention to speak if you qualify as ready to tell me, God here? I got to thinking so much about what they'd say even here tonight. But you, anyone in this room reading the Word, go read the background of Dr. Ben Carson. Has anyone ever read the background of Dr. Ben Carson? If you have it, you need to. And you can vote for abortion after reading his background, then you have to answer. Not to me, not to no one else in this world, but to God himself. Really. Uh, I've been blessed. I'll soon be 75 years old. It really bothered me when I needed a heart. Somebody's heart need to talk about it in this day. Somebody had to give their life for me to live. Why me? I got the heart of a 23-year-old man killing a farmer, actually. Why did he have to die for me to live? It's still bothering me, but my cardiologist told me, two weeks after I went back for a check, got back from the hospital. He said, "You're making this thing wrong. You got that heart because he signed that paper stating if anything happened to him, he wants somebody to live. So you fulfilled his wishes, you didn't take his. From this day forward, I've looked at it that way. I fulfill his wishes. I can never be a daughter myself, could I ask that question? But I'm through with this heart, I got a 23-year-old heart, I'm supposed to be 75. You can use it again." They say, "No, they can never be using it." Wouldn't it be great down the road if they could, they don't, it gets to a point. Or the doctor told me, said, "You will never die from your heart." And so far, I've had no rejection at all, it's been seven years. But anyway, I just, I've worked, and you saw here, some, I've never been hurt before, injured. I worked with the Pregnancy Center when it first opened in Galacto, I was very much involved with that. Even before that, when I was a kid, 17-years-old, I was employed by one of the old 1L hospitals, up 1L, up the blowers. I've seen so many things about this, this little girl was coming in, uh, the same condition. Even my daughter was pregnant, not married at a young age, 19-years-old. Now I asked her just tonight before I left, I said, "Did you ever entertain abortion?" She said, "Dad, I couldn't help it." She said, "I got a lot of pressure from outside friends and family." And see, if she'd have had that, I've got a daughter here in Grayson County, a granddaughter of Grayson County School, this next year will be a senior. Her goal is to become a doctor and become a brain surgeon. If my daughter had a, had that abortion, she wouldn't have had that opportunity. Thank you, God, very much.
Next speaker is Karen Luther.
I'm Karen Luther, 512 Turkey Knop Road, Grayson, Virginia. My story's personal, I'll keep it very brief. My husband and I tried having children for 13 years. We went through attempts using in vitro fertilization, several. My body, whenever I did become pregnant, my body changed hormonally, supporting and indicating the life of my baby. As soon as the embryo was implanted, those changes started happening in my body, showing me there was life there. And the doctor explained, there was life there that I had hoped, that we were gonna have a child. The life of my embryo, my baby, began when cell division occurred after the sperm and the egg united. My baby was alive, and thank God, she's here tonight. Today, I'm blessed with this 19-year-old young lady who was born for such a time as this. I thank God for her, and I thank God for life. All life that should be valued, all life. I am here to support the sanctuary for the unborn, and I pray that you will value life and that you will cast your vote to support life. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Roberts, 2268 Elk Creek Parkway. I just wanted to state that I believe that life is our God-given privilege, and that as such, we need to do all that we can to protect it at every stage of existence. Therefore, I support making Grayson County a sanctuary for the unborn, and I hope that you will too. These children are unable to make their voices heard, so we will do that for them until they are able. I'm a member of a pro-life group seeking to create a new pregnancy resource center in our area to also help with these concerns. It is my hope that we can all work together for the cause of protecting life. Lastly, as I was just waiting outside, I happened to notice the rug with the seal of Grayson County on it. There's a slogan on a banner that reads, "Protector of Nature." I love that. We live in a beautiful part of God's creation, it should be protected. Likewise, we can surely help to protect those who are the most innocent and vulnerable among us all as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Michael Muffin.
Good evening, uh, my name is Michael McCallum, 1715 Powder Mill Road, Elk Creek. Uh, we've been living in Elk Creek for about seven years now. Been proud to be a part of Grayson County, and, uh, still under that flag for over 21 years, been in our country, it's been God-forsaken places, and I've seen some stuff that you can only imagine as far as protecting life. And now I'm standing here tonight trying to protect life. As each of you, when you were born, you were stitched together in your mother's womb. And God knew you, knew you then. And I think about each one of these children that were taken, that never had the opportunity to make or contribute to the world. And I've been listening to conversation tonight, and I hear words like poster child and generations. Well, I'm speaking behalf tonight of the ones that can't speak or didn't have the opportunity to speak. That breaks my heart, man. It really does. And one day, I will stand before God, and I'm gonna give an account. And he's gonna say, "Well done, you stood for life." But you know, each one of you are gonna stand before him. And what is he gonna say to you? You have a chance to make a difference. Just like people that carry firearms, people that are in the military, we have a chance to step forward when it's difficult and make a difference. And we're gonna catch a backlash, but it's for the greater good. And if you guys are in that position, you can make that change. I encourage you, step forward. And we'll deal with the backlash, just like when they made us a sanctuary city for the second amendment, I was like, "Hoo-ya." Man, that went right on through. And that was to protect our way of life, to protect our families and the people that are not able to protect themselves, and that's what we're asking now. We need to protect the folks that cannot protect themselves. Nothing more innocent than a child. We need to give them a chance to live, to fill these vacancies that we have just here in Grayson County, all over the world. God gives life and God takes it away, it's not, it shouldn't be our decision to make it. So my prayer is, first off, you guys know Christ, you should say, because again, we are gonna stand before him one day, whether you believe it or not. But I'm in support of this sanctuary. And I pray that you guys will push it forward, let's make a difference. It takes a spark to get a fire going, let's get the spark going here in Grayson County, and see how it rolls out, let's see what that ripple effect happens, see what kind of difference we can make.
Next speaker is Mike Gaffey.
Yeah, I'm Mike Gaffey, yeah, I came off the last month, and, uh, I live at 348 Rock Quarry Lane in Elk Creek. And I want to see if you could help me out a little bit, I was, uh, I live on a piece of property that, uh, gave me being cancerous, because I'm just outside of where they would bring a cable in. And the Wi-Fi goes over top of my house. And several years ago, I had open-heart surgery, valves replaced, and things like that, and it paced me. And my cardiologist keeps tracking me by Wi-Fi. Sound like don't work very good. And I also have problems with walking at 75-years-old. Uh, I kind of stumble and have a high fall risk, so I was looking to try to get one of them things that when you fall, that, uh, sends a message out from a bike or someone, or get some help. That takes a lot of bike, so I was wondering if you could talk about giving, even I was looking, living up on the internet, they have these, the Wi-Fi that can maybe potentially, I don't know how all that stuff works, that could go on a pole and maybe shoot toward my house, but like, save the life, so try it out for me. I'll help pay for it. Wonder if you could help me get that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next is, uh, Craig Hinsel.
Good evening, Craig Hinsel, 523 Silver Hill Road, Hinsel, Virginia. First of all, thank y'all for your awesome time. Big situation, but I'm here in support of the sanctuary for the unborn. Kind of coming on piggyback from my, there in Romans 4,4, the Bible says that we will all stand before God and give an account of our lives. In the choices that are made in our lives, there'll always be judgment from somebody, fear man or fear God. Deuteronomy 1:17 says, "You should not fear man, for the judgment is God's." If we're going to fear God, this means that we can make decisions based on the reality of God, the commands of God, and the priorities of God. This means that we will be incapable of living for the approval of other people. You must choose fear man or fear God. "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing any harm." That's from Albert Einstein. The board, as you move forward with this decision, pray that you be mindful of this. This is not the end. The end is whenever you stand before God and give an account for your lifetime. "I've sat before you life and death, blessings and curses, therefore choose life." So board, I ask you to take it into consideration as a personal note from me, you that you will stand before God. I don't want you to have to give an account for something that you might really not want to do. So fear God, not me. And just for me and my house, full circle.
Looks like Harold Van Holy.
I think you're already in class.
Somebody wrote my name, I guess, why not?
Uh, Kevin Strong. My name is Kevin Strong, I live at 297 Mountain Breeze Road. I wanted to read you a story from the book of Judges, chapter 19, but I consider it too horrific for this chamber. You may wish to read it for yourself at a later time, that's Judges, chapter 19. It's a story about a man who gives his daughter as a concubine, a czar. A host who offers his virgin daughter to rapists. It's outrageous. A Levite, the master of the concubine, who gives her to the rapist to save himself. Unforgivable cowardice. The Levite later cuts up the body of the concubine into 12 pieces to be sent throughout the land. Barbaric, even satanic. I'll close details in a moment, and I will get right to my point. This story happened before the time of kings in Israel. It was a patriarchal society where men made all the decisions, and the value of a woman was apparently next to nothing. From the father who would give his own daughter as a concubine to the guilty host who offered his virgin daughter to the rapist, and the Levite who gave his concubine to the rapist to spare himself, where is the defender of the woman's God-given rights? In our society, women continue to fight for their rights. It has only been since you gentlemen were born that women could have their own bank accounts, credit cards, and mortgages. And more recently, have women been allowed to serve in the military and attend military academies as their male counterparts? And only in the past decade, with the Me Too movement, have women begun to be taken seriously with regards to sexual assault. As you go forward with consideration of the sanctuary ordinance, I urge you to closely consider the arguments of each and every woman who comes before you, regardless of her position on this matter. Women are the people who carry the unborn. As for the arguments of men, consider whether they are defenders, protectors, and champions of women's freedom, or are they patriarchs who see themselves as superior to women and wish to limit their freedom of choice? Thank you.
Rick Young. I'm Rick Young, and, uh, I live at 447, now, Box Creek Road in Martha Wilson, Virginia. And, uh, I'm here to say tonight that I am pro-life. Uh, I believe that, uh, I'd like to ask that the board reconsider their decision to move back the, the hearing to make, uh, Grayson County a sanctuary county. Uh, I, I don't believe in reckless abortion. I, I, I think that, as some of the folks have said before, I, I, I think we'll all be held accountable for the things that we do. I think we'll be held accountable also for the things that we don't do. Okay? Um, and I, I want to just think about this just for a minute. As for myself or one of you, if, if someone took your life, they came and take your life because you were in their way or you were causing some issue that they didn't want to deal with, would those folks be prosecuted? Today, would they be prosecuted? And that's the standpoint that I feel that abortion is. I, I think it's wrong to take a person's life, whether the person's in the mother's womb or the person is an aged person. But I ask you today, I ask you today, as a board, and I appreciate everything that you do, the hard work that you put forth, I ask you to consider to move the hearing back and to consider to make Grayson County a sanctuary county. I'm asking you today to choose life, to choose life. In the study, in the study of numerology, five, the number five is a number of grades. In the study, in the study of numerology, five, the number five is a number of grace. There's five of y'all. And I'm asking you to show some grace and make this happen for the children, the unborn children that are, their lives were taken for some ungodly reason. You know, as long, as long as time has went on, we've all had a choice. There's always been a choice. One around another to do one thing one way or do it the other way. I'm asking you today to make your choice, choose life. I have forty-one seconds and I want to say one other thing, too. When the tree growers spray, the bees die. My dad had forty-two stands of bee hives, okay? And he worked those bees all the time. And as the pine trees growers, as they grow their pines and stuff like that, I'm, I'm not against that. I love Christmas trees. I love Christmas. But you can see the bees fly in and die at their hives. So I just ask Grayson County also to, to consider those things also. Thank you.
My name is Reddick Key. I live at ninety-seven Horse Ford Lane in Independence. I come here tonight to let you know that I do stand for the ordinance of Mike Grayson County, a sanctuary for the unborn. I do wish, and I start with how appreciative y'all do got to be. It's not an easy job. And I think everyone in this room realizes that. You're under a lot of pressure from both sides. You've been given a lot of facts. You've been given a lot of fish. But some of this stuff just comes down the common sense. The gentleman, one of them is speaking about the river. What are we going to do for the next generation? Right now, the next generation being keep at the cost convenience. I had to have a dog put down the other week. We're more humane about putting down a dog than we are what they do when unborn child and mother. If you don't believe me, go home and pull up the YouTube video that shows a horse being performed. But I encourage you tonight, take these dates that have been set back for these public hearings, bring them back up. Let the people of Grayson County speak their favor to this man. I must go tomorrow. Thank you all.
My name is Cherry Key. I live at ninety-seven Horse Ford Lane in Independence. First of all, I want to thank you guys for what you do because it isn't easy. And you stand for Grayson County, but I just want to relate this to you. I won't, I look at your emblem there on the back and it says, "In God we trust." And this is the verse that came to my mind two or three different times this week when I was thinking about what I was going to say. Proverbs thirty-five through six. "Trust in the Lord with all thy heart and leave not unto thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy paths." If we trust God, God is in ultimate control. It doesn't matter what happens. Regardless if you're for it or against it, God has the final say. And you know, when we stand before him, is he, or is he going to be happy with the decision that we made and with what we stood for? I do urge you all to please move the date of the public hearing back forward, back this way. So you know, give the great, give Grayson County citizens their voice to say their feelings on this. And there is opposition. There is opposition. But you know, it says, "In God we trust." Do we trust God fully to allow him to work in this county and for this county? Thank you very much.
I'm Darlene Hinsell at eight-seventeen Oak Drive here in Independence. And I want to thank you guys for all your hard work that you do. I know it's tireless. But I am for Grayson County to be a sanctuary county. And if you can move back the dates so people can vote or whatever is necessary. I know in our church and probably the past two years, we've had at least a dozen or more new babies. And they give joy to my heart. And when they go to children's church, they're coming everywhere, which like, and they just give me joy. They give you a smile. Even where I work, if a baby comes in to where I work, we're all scrambling to see the baby and see if we can hold it. And so they are blessing to us and we should not, I don't think we should be making the decision to kill babies. Because if we do, we're going to have that blood on our hands. And just think tonight, if all of us were aborted, we wouldn't be here. So we are thankful that our mothers didn't do that. So may God be with you as you make this decision and that you make the right decision.
Thank you.
My name is James Hayes. I reside at three-eight-nine-one Grass Creek Road, Martha Wilson. First thing on the agenda is the gigabing issue that we're having. They run my cable six weeks ago. Contact with them as of yesterday. They asked why they hadn't hooked me up. The email the lady sent me back was because AEP hadn't turned the box on. They had everything. It was rest in the AEP's hands. They couldn't do nothing, but they made the box live. This, and I'm just one of very, very many that's on the western end of this county. It was supposed to have been the second one that was hooked to western end. It was in the newspaper and it was trying to get all this approved. And here we are, understanding Freeze, Spring Valley, Claywood, they're all trying to get hooked up now. And this is coming from the people running the cable. They're doing a good job. They're dragging a mayor board. I mean, why is not somebody out here sort of keeping in control when they got four and five trucks and ten and twelve men and two of them's on a pole and the others is standing on the ground? I mean, somebody's are putting that bill towards either grant money or whatever. But that, they're stealing our funds. They have took all the money, understanding it was appropriated to get this stuff in going. And just in our meeting six weeks ago at Grant, we're supposed to have this all hooked up everybody by October of this year. The way it's going, they won't have people hooked up in October of twenty-twenty-five or twenty-six. I mean, the people, I mean, we need it. I mean, I live right there, was on the borderline even being able to get it because they said I might have to go go sad life. I'm just like the other gentleman right here. I've got a heart monitor in right now. They can't read it because I don't have enough internet and stuff to pick it up in Kingsport, Tennessee. And my health issues, I mean, I, I still go and work every day, trying to do the best I can. And I know you all have got far more things that you need to worry about. So one of the other things getting off of this is this killing these babies. For those that made a decision on this board to put it off going December, if that is a problem or an issue, whoever you are and you know who you are, then get somebody to put it on and let the people vote for it. If you're afraid to make that decision, then let the citizens of Grayson County make it. And that way you won't have the burden on you all. But I mean, it needs to be pro-life here. These little young ones and stuff, I mean, they deserve a chance. I mean, we all just, we all hope we have young ones and stuff. It could be our granddaughter or a grandchild or a daughter. It could be face of that. What would we want to live like? Not knowing what we might have had a grandbaby or whatever, boy, girl, to play with, grow up, watch a payboy or something. That's a big decisions to make. And if y'all don't want to make them, then put it on a poll or what? And let the election, let the people of Grayson County get it, let it in the air and get it done and reset.
Everybody, you know, we still do have several minutes, so everybody will be respectful in three minutes.
I will. It could be short, not like the last one. Anne Rose, fifteen, Escobalay, Elk Creek. I'm going to read a little recap of what happened last month at Board Supervisors Meeting and the Budget Meeting. This was from May. A real good recap I'm reading from is from Marley Dixon. Everyone knows who he is, Sanctuary City. He wrote this on May eighteenth. Last week, the Board of Supervisors for Grayson County in May voted three to two to move forward with a sanctuary county for the unborn ordinance, which would require compliance with federal abortion laws for publication and hearing. The general public expected the ordinance to be published and a hearing to be scheduled in a matter of weeks. Tonight, which was the eighteenth, I guess, tonight, May eighteenth, during the Grayson County Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop, two of the supervisors who voted against the ordinance pulled a fast one. Supervisors John Fad and Bradley Ivy led the charge to delay the hearing from the people by taking, by making and seconding a motion to schedule the hearing seven months from now on December fourteenth. The only supervisor who voted not to delay the hearing seven months was Supervisor Anderson. Most disappointing, Supervisors Kenneth Belton and Mike Hash caved to pressure and voted with Supervisors Fad and Ivy to delay the hearing for the people for seven months. This cowardly and disgraceful action by the Grayson County Board of Supervisors came on the same day a story was published on the front page of the Washington Post, which mentioned the efforts of Grayson County. This deplorable action by the Board of Supervisors inviting seven months of what some of the opposing ordinance are calling political theater comes just three days after the Grayson County Republican Party passed a resolution in support of the Board of Supervisors passing the ordinance. Many throughout Grayson County are ticked as many throughout the county want leaders who true God and are willing to stand for life, not leaders who cave to organizations like the ACLU of Virginia, the Oracle Temple, and their pro-abortion interest. The people of Grayson County deserve better. That was written by Marley Dixon. And just a few things from me. The public has a right to know where you stand on important issues before election. I want to know where you stand on the Sanctuary City for the unborn. That issue is important, excuse me, important to me. By these four supervisors voting to push the public hearing to discuss Sanctuary City for the unborn, not to June, not to July, not to August, not to September, not to October, not to November, but December, until they're hopefully voted back in, to me, that's a slap in the face. To me, it signifies your stand on the issue. Your stand is, oh, for me, and just maybe I'll agree to support the ordinance. That's your stand, maybe. I'm really disappointed, I'm almost done, two more paragraphs, I mean, two more sentences. I'm really disappointed that four of you supervisors are maybe votes. I don't need wishy-washy decision makers who say one thing one week and then change their mind the next week. We are simply asking for a public hearing and we can't even get that to after countywide elections seven months from now. That's a shame. In November, vote pro-life Michael Cornett for Supervisor at Large. Go Mike, Grayson County Supervisor at Large pro-life.
I'm Corey Kesterman. I live at one-one-five Moore Street here in Independence. I have little to add to what has already been said, which I fully agree with, and I think y'all need to listen. And I have to say.
Four-two-two Greystone. Someone's outside. Victor Pass.
My name is Elizabeth Jones, eight-three-four-eight Elk Creek Parkway, Elk Creek. And I'm just, just like, like you said, I don't have a lot to add. I've been a lifelong health professional and I believe in life. I worked my whole life to preserve it and I am not for destroying it. So I ask that you would support this.
I'm Rex News, bringing up in Valley Lane in Benton, Virginia. I don't have much to add either. I think that's probably said, but we thank you for your time. Edmund Burke said, "Necesitariae for the crimes of evil is for good men to do nothing." I know every one of you but you on the board. I know all of you good men. So I urge you to do the right thing. Look for this sanctuary of the unborn because we need to keep out what's, what's coming all over. You know, it's just, it's just a matter of time before it ever gets here. Like the drugs, just like, like the gun situation that we've done in the sanctuary for guns that we come here to. So like you for your time.
Pastor, I guess it's Deb, right? Pastor John Brank, I appreciate, I'd love to go back to church. I live at two-zero-four-four Biggs Mountain Road, Galax. Where do you follow you? You're right on the path. But anyway, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of those who weren't able to make it. I've got a hundred and eighteen petitions. I'll go get a view of you of people that have signed the for the sanctuary for the unborn. We really want to urge y'all to move it back up before there's a public hearing and vote on it. There ain't a whole lot I can add. I was kind of worried, to be honest with you, coming up here, what I was going, what I was going to see. prayed about it, talked more about it. Very encouraging, very encouraging to people that are taking a stand for life. God is a giver and a grinder of life. He tells us that many times in the Bible. David said in Psalm before I was ever formed in the womb, wrote my members in the book. He told Jeremiah before you was ever formed in the womb, he said, "I called you and ordained you to speak for kings and judges." John Abbot slept in the womb when Mary told Elizabeth about Jesus Christ. I believe in the sovereign God of the universe. I believe in the Son Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit, the Holy Trinity. And you know, either way this thing goes, to be honest, I'm going to have a final say. And not to piggyback off of anybody, what anybody said, because man, y'all laid it out there tonight. But the word tells us that we will give an account for the deeds done in our body, whether they be good or bad. Judgment day will come. It comes for the Christian just like it comes for the lost. We will stand at the judgment seat of Christ and be judged by works. And those who do not know Christ will stand at your grave. And those who do not know Christ will stand at your great white throne judgment and be judged by their works. So accountability. And I know, I ain't got but a man left, but I shared a story with you. My niece, three years ago, had her fourth child. And they wanted her to abort it because her placenta was growing into her bladder. And she would do it. She carried it for thirty-one weeks. They ended up having to take a C-section and take the young. And she ended up going to Duke over several surgeries. Uh, they give her eight units of blood on the table because of the condition. But she, she told her mom, my sister, she told her, she said, "I won't give, give life to this baby whether it takes my or mine." And she made that decision. And I know there's a lot of decisions out there. But we all do bad things. We all do bad things. Hey, I know it's part of the Bible tells us that. And we'll give an account, but I thank God that when the time comes for me to stand before him, this can be a large charge against my account. But I'm here to speak for the unborn.
Hello, I'm Rebecca McNamara, one-thirteen Hillcrest Avenue, Independence. I am pro-life. Um, I have two beautiful daughters and three beautiful granddaughters. And I knew that there was life in me when I was carrying my children. Um, I'm requesting that the board move forward the public hearing uh, to make Grayson County a sanctuary for the unborn. Thank you so much.
Maybe Kaufman.
Becky Kaufman, seventeen eighty-five Sugar Camp Lane, Independence. Um, first, I would like to express my respect for Mr. Sperlin for his knowledge and professionalism in serving the county. And thank him for reading our resolution and taking time to respond. Um, frankly, there wasn't much in the response that we did not already know. We've spent the last three years studying the laws of the Commonwealth and the limitations of enforcement. In fact, we also spend a lot of time explaining these things to an unhappy public, as people call us now. Uh, we know that we have to aim bigger than the county. Most of the changes that we want have to be at state level. Um, we wanted some support, some ideas at the very least from the county because we do worry about unintended consequences. Um, so one quote is from him is "Non-target application or exposure, for example, overspraying a crop field onto an adjacent property would be deemed illegal misuse." Well, we see this all the time. And in practically every case, there's some sort of catch twenty-two where the complaint goes into limbo. Uh, the enforcement agencies do their best, but the law fails utterly in protecting us. And I can't, I don't have time to go through all the resolutions, but I want to say we work with all of the agencies mentioned, particularly V-DAX in Richmond, and we work very closely with DEQ. They use our data from stream monitoring. And in fact, they have asked us to monitor sites in areas they can't access because we can network and go on private land. We recently spoke with a Health Department official who commented that a new study needs to be done. Um, we did ask them for a report on brain cancer, where you can clearly see that the rate of brain cancer for Grayson from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen is more than one point five times that of the state overall. And this is striking when you consider that we should be exposed to far less pollution than the dirty cities. But yes, due to HIPAA, uh, the data is not granular enough to really make many conclusions. Um, we, another quote, "The current Virginia Pesticide Control Act does not segregate against one type of agriculture." Well, this is a problem. Um, we want to live where everybody can farm, not just multimillionaires who can crowd everyone else out. Whose right to farm is it? Apparently only millionaires. Where are we headed? We know many people who are moving away and also have nice families who have ruled out moving here because of the trees. We can't exactly hide them. And these are people who have a nice tax base and a choice of where to live. So think about that. Thank you.
All right. Just a second. I brought a few photos today and hopefully you all can see them in that. So I grow organic for myself. I moved here from Department of Salat, Department of Farmers Market, and at which point I call our extension office to visit our farm. We're helping a greenhouse in Finsay. I was told by Kevin Sperlin that glyphosate was so safe, he can drink it. And that my plans to sell organic in this area would not work out, which I went on to further sell for three more years without a problem. Everyone encouraged that. I sold out every week. So this study that I referred to has been done in Bangladesh because they care about their citizens' health in relation to the proximity of the chemicals more than they have in this area yet. We all need to demand that study be done here. We would know the truth of it if we could get studies done. When we see the overspray and we call and we say that there's something been done, we're sent to V-DAX and those are not followed up. Um, but for the ones that are, um, this, this person, farmer, sprayed an individual and in their garden on two separate occasions and found out during the V-DAX report that they didn't have a pesticide license for the state of Virginia. From two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, there were no licenses. So there is no accountability there. All of our complaints coming in that timeframe was coming from someone not even licensed to spray pesticides. So all these regulations, that big file that we're supposed to save our workers and protect them, no one's checking on that. So this is a photo from Christmas tree farming. Do you notice how far away those trees are from each other? And there's animals grazing in between that? Well, now find that. They're so close together, they're causing disease. You see these copper-colored trees mixed in there? Anytime y'all see copper-colored trees, that's by toxins. There are three times. They depend on more chemical usage because, and the disease is taken off. So wouldn't y'all take your own advice to clean up those disease? Your protocol is to try to air it out in between there. But we're not doing that. We're packing on more trees in such a small area that there are pest problems, disease problems. We have to spray more chemicals. Toxins are everywhere and it should be a right to choose to reduce or eliminate toxins in our life. Whose right to farm is it? Mind if I'm organic? Or this multi-million dollar farmer to spray chemicals over top of my farm right next to me and in the wind? I've been in touch with on a server at the Department of Health. That health study isn't accurate because they can't base it off of people living in proximity to these fields, which is where this study needs to be done for. Nothing else is relevant. Thousands of people in this county have signed a petition, change.org/GraysonCounty, to stop this spraying. The first I've ever heard that you can get a pesticide, pesticide test for water was tonight from, in all the years we've been after getting a pesticide test for water, we have yet to get one. And believe me when I say there have been a lot of people on the phone for multiple years prior. There are leases that mention killing the deer because they carry the pesticides into the fields. There were laws and law like that. Farmers, people don't want to move here when that spray is around them because the Department of Health can't even side a well within fifty feet of the spray. But yet, people that have already lived here for years and have a well are now ten feet, twenty feet from the spraying on all sides in some cases. So tell me, nobody wants to move here unless they don't know what's happening. So it's not just a problem. The Department of Health says it's a problem. They can't even put a well within fifty feet of the spray. So, thank you all.
Sorry. My name is something, Mr. Caskey. I want to say, you know, like, I am pro-life. And as a Christian, I am pro-life. It's my duty to speak for those who cannot. Every life is precious and God has a purpose and a plan. And I go to Turkey not church and we're all pro-life, so I urge you to believe that's the weekend.
I just want to say I'm pro-life. I believe that every life is important. From the time of conception, from the time to the baby. Well, from the time that the baby is conceived, it is still alive until the time that it's still. I don't think that people would want their, uh, grandfathers, grandmothers and stuff for some way to say, okay, uh, they're, they can't work anymore, uh, they're away, they're useless. And then for people to make a decision that their life is not important. I think all life is important. And so I think this sanctuary city is something that needs to be considered and have really related and have all this like Grayson.
My name is Marianne Family and I live at one-seventy-five Fox Mill Lane. And I just want to say that any mom that has ever carried a child in her womb is well aware that that is a living need. And those of us that have been blessed to have their child and enjoy raising their child, um, it's just, it's an insect, it really is. And, um, I just want to say that I think it's sad that they have got a sanctuary city to save the unborn. But I certainly want to see it come as quickly as possible because every day that we wait, our lives are being lost. So please think about that in your hearts and pray about it before you make a decision. Because, um, so many lives are, um, you know, who is, who, um, accountable to me. And I just feel that, um, even if it's an unwanted pregnancy, there are thousands, if not millions, of couples that are only too eager to adopt a child. And if that mother has the support of people in the community to help her and to, um, come alongside her until that baby could be adopted, um, I just think we're doing a real disservice not to allow, um, that sanctuary city to, to, um, be available for her and any number of young women that might be in that situation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Manley. I live at one-seventy-five Fox Mill Lane, Meltha Wilson. I'm seventy-seven years old. And you say, why is that important? Well, in my seventy-seven years, I have never had the opportunity to save a life. And God, in His divine providence, has given each one of you this incredible opportunity to save many lives for many years. I would just encourage you to consider that, pray about that, and vote to make Grayson County the sanctuary county for the unborn. And I thank you for your opportunity to voice my opinion and for your attention. Thank you.
David Moxley.
My name's David Moxley. I live at thirteen oh-eight Fulton Road, Independence. I'm a lifetime resident of Grayson County, one of the few that's left, really. And I want to tell you, I am far a sanctuary city. And more than that, I am far, you move in the consideration of it, uh, I don't know why, what I was behind moving it back. So it's monetary, political, or bought, because you need to bring it to the citizens of Grayson County. It's our county. They just elected you to take care of the administration of it. Now, thank you for your time. I appreciate everything you did.
Thanks, members. Uh, my name is Russell Hall. I live in four-three-nine Panorama Lane. Um, I'm glad to say I'm the father of four young boys. Um, I've been coming, I mean, I've been, uh, living here in Independence now for about fifteen years. However, I've been coming up here for about twenty-three years. Before then, I lived in Winston-Salem before I was a dad. And when I wanted to be a dad, I wanted to bring love in a place that had faith, community, beautiful scenery, kind people. I mean, we call to love our neighbors. And, um, I found it all here. You know, this is a place that even if we politically do not agree, we're still going to love our neighbor and help our neighbor. You know? And with raising my boys, it's funny, I'm going to go off subject here. Come recently, we literally have been letting them watch Little House on the Prairie, where there's moral, there's moral standards where you do the right thing, even when it goes against sometimes what you might believe, but you're still doing the right thing politically, not politically. You just do the right thing. I want to raise my young man in a community that can stand, that can stand for life, for their faith, and let them be in a place that they don't have to go by Planned Parenthood, abortion clinic. That they can stand and want their future kids to be in our community, to be strong men who will also stand up for the unborn, which is what I'm here to do today. I thank you for your time once again. I'm glad to be a Christian and standing up for the unborn. My name is Russell. Thank you.
Next, Rich Speaker, Laura George.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm back again, uh, representing those of our faiths in this county. My name is Laura George and I'm the minister at Oracle Temple at eighty-eight Oracle Way, Independence, Virginia. My name is Laura George, and I'm the minister to Oracle Temple at eighty-eight Oracle Way, Independence, Virginia. I think we need to be honest that this ordinance is um, being proposed for religious reasons. Almost every speaker, and I've been keeping track, I think I can even say every speaker who spoke on behalf of passing this ordinance, um, referred to God, often referring to God as a He. And I think tonight, I've made the point that the First Amendment protects those of us of other traditions. And I think I've also made the point that this ordinance violates the Dillon Rule. It violates the Virginia Constitution, so there's a legal reason for you guys not to touch this with a ten-foot pole. But I think tonight, the point I want to make is that in the West where we live, we were raised to believe that God is this outside entity. And I was raised this way, too. I was raised in the Catholic tradition. I was raised to believe that God was a man. And you know, we refer to God as a He throughout the New Testament. In my search for greater understanding of God, I started studying the Eastern traditions. And half this planet believes that God isn't out there. It's not some entity floating in the sky. That it is inside of each one of us and that we are our own judge and jury, so to speak. And in these Eastern traditions, deity is viewed as a very private matter. And for those who truly want to understand what Jesus was talking about, I would encourage you to read the Gospel of Thomas, which the Catholic Church purposely declined to approve of in the New Testament. And in this gospel, you will see that he is speaking as the Swami speak, as the yogi speak, as the masters in the East speak. It is also the oldest gospel we have. And there's a reason why the Catholic bishops decided that you shouldn't read it. And thank God, no pun intended, thank God, that this gospel was buried and was untouched for two thousand years. In the gospel, you see that Jesus is telling us to be our own source of wisdom. And that is what many people now believe about deity, that it is inside of each one of us, and therefore, we have an affirmative obligation to learn, to discern right from wrong. To impose a Christian, and it's not even a majority Christian belief, on others is simply not the American way. So, I'm going to encourage you gentlemen again to not touch this with a ten-foot pole. And I also believe you were wise to postpone the hearing because Virginia law would not allow this statute to be approved now. It was a very wise decision.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Miley Foster. I live on Comperdruck Road. I am a Christian. And I firmly believe that child abortion is nothing more than premeditated murder. I've served in law enforcement for better than thirty years. And I'm sure I can look in a dictionary, a law book, and show you that definition. I implore you to pass this ruling on sanctuary for Grayson County. Thank you.
She's with kids, she wants to speak, she's coming. Can you go to the next one?
Chase Enzil.
Hello, my name is Chase Enzil. I'm one of the younger folks here, as I can see. A little bit outnumbered here, but I'll keep it short. Five two three, Silver Hill Road. I'm in support of the sanctuary city for the unborn, just for my generation and for what my generation, you know, might see in this town, you know. I don't know if any of these others are planning on staying here, but you know, we've got to look out for our kids someday, if we have kids, and then for our kids' kids. Thank you, guys.
I'm Mr. Fornale. Uh, Mr. Fornale, I live at thirty-one thirty-five Grayson Parkway, Independence. I'm a Republican candidate for supervisor large, which is where Mr. Pamp said. And um, I didn't plan to come to speak tonight, but whenever I got here, the, I just noticed the lights kept turning on. And um, it seemed to me like that's what just happened to the citizens of this county one month ago. You voted to schedule a public hearing a month ago, and then you went in the back room, you turned the lights off on us. And it was not transparent to the people of this county by putting it in December, which everybody here knows that that's after the November election. Um, it's your job, I know it's a tough decision for all of you, but it's your job to sit there and make those tough decisions. That's why you're elected, and that's why the people trust you. And I support it, the sanctuary for the unborn. And come January, when I am elected, I will support it. Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you for your time. Uh, I just wanted to come and say that, that I also stand for the unborn, and I stand in support of sanctuary for the unborn. I'm so thankful that I live here, that I grew up here, and that I'm raising my family here. It's an awesome place for a family. And when I think Grayson County, I think our music, I think our beautiful mountains, I think our kind people, I think our hospitality, I think all of those things. Um, and I think the sanctuary for the unborn that surely stands in Grayson County. That, that's what we should have. It goes along with all those other beautiful things that, that's a part of here.
Thank you.
David Austin.
He says Mike, Mike would like to sit, uh, speak first.
I, I had signed up.
Sorry, we'll, we'll put John out of seat on here, maybe on the.
Might have gone the wrong sheet.
Might have gone, come on in.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I thought I was right in front of my wife. She must have erased my name. Gentlemen, my name is Mike McHenry, and I reside at one thirteen Hillcrest Avenue here in Independence, Virginia. And I requested to address you tonight for the purpose of asking you to reconsider your decision last month to put off the public hearing concerning the ordinance of the sanctuary county for the unborn here in Grayson County. Now, gentlemen, I believe that a lot of people are divided about the issue of abortion in our country. However, I do not believe that's the case here in Grayson County. As a matter of fact, I believe that the vast, vast majority of the citizens of Grayson County support this ordinance of declaring Grayson County a sanctuary city for the unborn. And I think you know that as well. I also believe that the, that the vast majority of the Republican Party is not divided on this issue. And I know that a majority of you ran on the Republican Party platform. So, I believe that the, that the voting history of Grayson County overwhelmingly is clear as to whose platform the citizens of Grayson County support. And, and when you, as a board, call for a, a public hearing to solicit how the citizens of Grayson County would respond to declaring Grayson County a sanctuary county, I, I thought, well, it, it's probably unnecessary because I think they know, but necessary probably because we have to go through this process. But putting this hearing off to December is needless completely, and I think you know that. I think that possibly the delay that, that has been caused is due to threats by individuals promising that the ACLU will sue Grayson County if it moves forward with this. And I certainly hope you're not surprised by the threats on the parties who made those threats. The issue of abortion has been rightly returned by the Supreme Court of our, of our country to the states and the localities. And I think that the vast majority of the citizens of Grayson County want you to pass an ordinance declaring Grayson County a public sanctuary city for the unborn. I appreciate your time. Thank you, gentlemen, again, for your work, your service to this community. Opportunity to speak. Well done. I've been keeping score, and counting me and the one hundred and eighteen votes that Pastor Brannick had, it's one forty-nine to two. One hundred and forty-nine voices to two voices tonight on the ordinance for sanctuary county. Now, one of the things you were concerned with was an agreement from a lawyer to defend the county pro bono. That's in our, our lawyer has that now?
Does he have an agreement from, no, I don't know whether he has that.
He does. He does. Yeah. Our lawyer has that agreement. That was one thing that several of you shared with me. You know where I stand, in God we trust. God is the giver and God is the taker of life. The unborn is precious, baby, in the mother's womb from conception. You don't know your bylaws. You now have the opportunity, after I get through speaking, I'm a live speaker. When I get through speaking, you have the opportunity that one of you can make a motion to move this to July. You can't because you were a dissenting vote, Tracy can't. Mike can't because he's the moderator. But one of you three can make the motion to move this forward to July or August, and then someone can second, and you can come to the vote. You have that opportunity when you come out of public comment. You now get to choose who you will serve. Who you will fear. Don't fear God, or you don't fear man. You've heard plenty of witnesses that you will stand before God, just like I will stand before God. These people that have spoken tonight will stand before God with clean hands.
All the rest of the speakers for public comment. No one has requested time for the board to supervise the comment. And there's no close session. What motion we adjourn?
We have discussion.
Discussion?
I'd just like to speak since I was called out by the pastor. Um, it is my understanding, since I was a dissenting vote, that I can't make that motion. And I stood with you because I was voted by you, and I'll continue to stand with you. And I thank you.
Any further discussion? There's a motion before the board to adjourn, and we also want another second. No further discussion? All in favor, sing the anthem, say "ah." Can you oppose?
No.
Chair also no.